It is six o'clock. We are going to promptly start tonight's budget meetings. This is a meeting of the Finance Committee. I'll read the committee of the whole, since we do have a quorum. This notice of a City Council Committee of the whole meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of City Councilors is present at this standing committee meeting. If less than a quorum of City Councilors is present, no committee of the whole meeting shall take place. If a quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the standing committee agenda items listed above. With me this evening, I'm David Cormier. I'm the Chairman of Finance, and with me this evening is the Clerk of Finance, Councilor Pauline Cormier, and the third member, Councilor Peter Angelini. First on the agenda is the Recreation Department, which is scheduled for 6:00 PM. I'll invite in Judy Sumner and anybody else that she wants to bring in with her. And for the public or anybody that's following along, we are going to be discussing line items 864 through 902 in the budget book. Thank you very much, Judy. I'll let you take a moment, catch your breath, and when you're ready, I'll let you begin highlighting your budget and what you're going to be able to accomplish this coming fiscal year. I'm sure that things are looking a little better for your department. I know you were affected by COVID, so I think you'll have a better year this year, it appears. And when you're ready, you can begin.
Okay. Well, thank you for giving this opportunity to explain my budget to you. I handed out a copy of our summer programs that we're doing currently. This year, due to COVID-19 and limited use of indoor space, we are only able to, for our summer program, to accommodate approximately 120 children. In the past, we've had over 300 sometimes. So we're splitting our program. We're using Sammasec School, a few, seven rooms at Sammasec School, and the cafeteria, and we're using Barrett Park for some of our programs as well. But in case of severe weather, we have to have indoor space as well. So that's where we're at now. And so our budget this year, for our salary budget, it covers 60 employees. Our numbers are down for our staff in our summer playground program. The numbers are down a little bit for the pool. We weren't able to secure enough WSIs to teach the lessons. I know lessons are really important. We're drowning right now. We're still trying to see if we can find additional WSIs. But a lot of people aren't signing up, too, for swim programs as well, or for some of our summer programs. I was very surprised. I thought we'd fill up the first day. A lot of communities fill their programs the first day. But, you know, a lot of the children have a great opportunity this summer as well, because there is summer enrichment program at the schools, too. And we were, and we, because of having to wear masks indoors, we limited the number of hours. So we're no longer doing the early drop-off in the mornings at 7:30 in the morning. We're starting at 9:00 in the morning, but we are extending to 5:00 in the afternoon for extended care. So if you go down my budget, when I'm asking for, under, the, it shows that the, was the Administrative Assistant position was Lisa Como. She is currently an S5, and she's maxed out on that. Lisa has really been doing, stepping to the plate. She's more of an Assistant Director. She helps me with all of our programs and our activities, opening the buildings. If there's maintenance things that have to be, you know, handled and addressed, she helps with that. So she, she's really an assistant to me at our department, and she should be compensated for that. So I discussed that with the mayor, and I said that the Assistant Director's position is an S6. So that I put in for an S6. So that would only be a $716 increase in pay for her if she, you know, if we fill that position. That position is on the books as an Assistant Director, but it has not been funded since I've been here. Previous to my working here, there was an Assistant Director full-time year-round and a Program Director full-time year-round. But when I started, those positions have been eliminated. And every year I asked for it, but it has never been funded. So I put in to, so we didn't have an extra position, I took Administrative Assistant out. So it's just a matter of a step up, just once, it's one S level up. So that's where that, why that one isn't funded, because she's currently the Administrative Assistant. And under our part-time, our regular labor account, there's less money there. I don't know if you're all aware of it, but our maintenance person, JR Lapointe, he retired. So he's no longer working for us, and we replaced him with a person that was working for the Forestry Department. And previous to that, he worked at the Gardner DPW. So he has a lot of experience working in municipal government, and he knows all the people at DPW. So he's a great asset to our department right now. So that's Doug Monroe, we call him DJ. So he's our new person on staff. So for part-time summer, I'm asking, we, right now, there's increase in minimum wage, and when I put out the ads, we weren't getting many people to apply at all for our jobs. You know, and I said, we need to find people. And we weren't able to find a lot of teachers, because a lot of teachers are all doing summer school. So I increased some of the pay rates for the teachers to secure them for us. There was no way I could pay them up to $30, but I was hiring some of them for, you know, a little over $20 an hour to work for us, the teachers, and then some of the college staff, too, to entice them to work for us. So I increased some of the salaries there, and like I said, minimum wage went up as well. So that was asking for $14,000 more in our budget for that line item. And then part-time labor. In the past, that has never been fully funded, and what I always did with part-time labor was to take that from my summer account, any other, if we had extra money left in the swim account or the playground account, we would fund maintenance out of that. And in speaking with John Richards previous to this, he had said he didn't realize that our, that the flower account for downtown, for Sally and Larry and people to water on the weekends, that that salary account comes out of the recreation, but all of the other expenses come out of the DPW Parks Department. So previously, it was under the Parks Department, but then the salary was shifted over to ours. So I talked to the mayor about that. So that was a $44,288. That amount was, you know, hadn't been being paid for in that line item budget. So that was added into my budget. And then, of course, swimming, I put less, because right now, I only am offering three sessions, I mean, three swim instructors for the pool. And we also reduced one week of the pool. The state wasn't able to get us open early, and we want to try and follow the state pool schedule, where they don't open to the last week in June. We were always opening the third week in June, so we're going with the last week in June. So that's why I reduced the budget on that line item. And for our light account, we, since the Mechanic Street Park has been built, that's been put under our jurisdiction to take care of that and maintain that, and that is lit. So that's an extra $350,000. I need, I mean, I mean, $350 that I need for that account to pay for that bill, light bill, for the year. And the cost of heating, it's projected that the cost of heating, our building and our program building will be going up. You know, the fuel cost has gone up, so we're requesting $1,500 extra to cover the cost of increased heat. And Rec Services, that account last year, for some reason or other, that one was not funded. I don't know if that was overlooked, so that shows an increase for that. And that's for the porta potties. During COVID, I had to put porta potties, you know, all over the parks, and I had to put more at Fournier. We had the Splash Park there. Softball didn't open their bathrooms, and people were calling me, saying we needed more porta potties. We put them at Barrett's as well. We had to put two at Doyle, because it was a long distance for people to walk across the field. So that, that expense was, I think, just for porta, last year, we did pay for it out of our, out of our maintenance account, but that amount, that amount, I believe, might be reimbursed by COVID. That was submitted as a reimbursement. So I'm not, I'm not certain if, you know, if that was funded by COVID or not, but we gave all the information to Wendy. So that's where that extra amount is. I think it was about $13,000 for porta potties that we pay. Okay. I think that was all the increase. Then the rest is all level-funded requests.
Okay. All right. So basically, Judy, this looks pretty standard. You can accomplish what you need to accomplish?
Yes.
You're satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I don't have really any questions on the Rec Department budget. It looks pretty standard. I'm very comfortable with it. But I'll check with members of my committee, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Judy, I don't have really a question, but I want to say that you guys do a great job with the budget that you have.
Thank you.
And thank you for your efforts. Everything is pretty straightforward. I think it's, the numbers are pretty close to your last budget.
Yes, it is.
So I don't see anything out of line. So thank you.
Councilor Angelini.
No questions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. Any members of the council? Councilor Shafra Zephyr?
Thank you very much. Thanks, Judy. I just had a couple of questions. Besides opening a week late for the pool, are you offering extended hours at all? I get calls from seniors, you know, who like to swim there. So you have lesser, you have fewer classes for kids, I'm imagining. But do you have comparable hours open for people, you know, adults who want to swim?
Yes. So during the swim lesson time, prior to opening to the general public, we have an hour set aside from 11:00 to 12:00 for the seniors to come in to do lap swimming at the pool.
Perfect.
So we are, I know that there's had been several requests for that, so we are doing that. So the pool opens at 12:00 and goes, it's open till 6:45, seven days a week, for seven weeks. And so we are accommodating them.
Yep. That's great. Thank you.
I have one other quick question. The Barrett Pond Dam contract, there was money in there last year, and there isn't any money in there this year.
There is, if you look at the, it's on the next page, under the Doyle Field. If you look there, it's, that one is, I know, when I first saw it, I said, oh, they forgot that. But then if you look down, it's 906. No, it's 900, I believe. No, 901, maybe?
900.
900. Contract services, and what's that for?
$3,600. So twice a year, I have to have the dam inspected by an engineer to, you know, report that to the state.
Okay. Thank you.
We are still, we're working on, I worked this year on applying for a grant to pay for the engineering cost to repair the dam and for all the permitting, all the permitting that needs to happen, so that if I receive that grant and have all of that in place, then the next year, I would be shovel-ready for applying for a grant to repair the dam. So that's our hope, is this year, if we get that grant, then next year, I would apply for a grant and try and find funding to repair that dam, and then that will be, that'll be done. So that's my hope and my plan.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. What's that?
I am.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Frida?
Judy, you don't know if there's, John, can you kind of put those, your flags down, please? Sorry. You're right in my, any CARES Act money that you're aware of that might have been applied for to help your budget?
We submitted that to Wendy. I'm not certain what was funded on that. All, you know, our expenses were less.
So you're not aware of anything that she's, is just going through her, and you don't know about?
Well, we spent, well, it would be reimbursed. So we spent it. We didn't receive the money, you know, to purchase it. So that's all reimbursable. So we submitted for all of our, you know, supplies that we needed for cleaning and mask and hand sanitizer, you know, and wipes, and then the porta potties, you know. So we submitted those to the mayor's office. So I, I did not ask if it was reimbursed.
So you took that out of your budget originally?
It's taken out of our budget, yes.
But you don't know if it's, you're getting it back?
Well, it wouldn't go, it would go back in the general fund, I believe.
But how about this year's budget? I mean, if there's...
I'm not certain if any, anything can be applied for in this via its budget. You know, I, I don't know if they, you know, I'm not, Wendy Weeks would probably be the best person to ask about how the CARES Act, she's working on that, in terms of whether or not money is given to us upfront for CARES Act, you know, expenses.
All right. Thank you.
You know, so last year, we were able to, we had a savings in, in some of our accounts for our, for our salary last year. CDBG had paid for some of our salaries. So that was very, they had money for that. We didn't have a lot of people that had applied for children in the programs. So that was a big help. So we had some savings in our salary this year. I mean, last year, this fiscal year.
So that's it. If we're getting, if we're getting money to cover some of the things you have, and it goes into the general fund when it comes back, but you used it out of your budget, no, ask that question.
Well, it just goes, it will go into free cash. I think, we'll just, I think it would go into free cash. So then, so, you know, the city would get it back. You know, some of my money and my budget, the city will get back.
Okay. What's that? Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Councilor Arndt?
Thank you. Judy, just one question. Is Barrett Park considered a high hazard, high hazard dam?
It is.
It is. And what repairs need to be done to it?
Well, there's, there's sinkholes in the dam that need to be corrected, and the gate valve has to be replaced, and the, the pipe, you know, to drain the pond, that's all corrugated, and it's all rusting out. So we probably have to put a sleeve in there, you know, so that doesn't fail. So if we ever, you know, and we have to clear the whole spillway, because if the spillway becomes, you know, blocked, then everything topples over the dam, and then it washes away the dam, and it's potential loss of life and property.
So you have a lot of work. But thank you.
Yes.
Okay. What's that? Okay.
I'm sorry, I didn't introduce you. This is John Chicalini. He's on our Finance Committee for the Rec Commission. He's been with us for a lot, for a number of years, over 20, over 20 years. So thank him for all his advice, helping me with the budget.
Good. Okay. Anybody else have any questions? I see none. Thank you, Judy and John, for both being here and all your hard work.
Thank you.
And we appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Too much papers.
Okay, the 615 hearing for the library is running just a few minutes behind schedule. So we are going to be discussing line items 823 through 862. And if Alex Lent, the library director, is here, could you please come into the chambers?
Welcome to your, your first budget hearing and to the City of Leominster. For me, it's the first time I've met you face-to-face, although we've talked a couple of times. And we appreciate you being here tonight to explain your budget to us. If you'd like to introduce yourself and the other person with you, and then you can begin to explain your budget and how it's going to impact you for the next fiscal year.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having us. I'm Alex Lent. I'm the library director for the public library here. I'm joined by Nicole Piermarini, the Assistant Director. And we're here to ask you for money. But because this is my first time here, I thought I would spend about 30 seconds telling you a bit about myself and why I'm here. I grew up in Petersham, Massachusetts, where I've recently moved back with my own family. Petersham is a very small town, and growing up, Leominster was our big city. So we would come here to go out to eat, to go shopping, to go to the movies. Very importantly, I got my first guitar in Leominster. So I think of Leominster as an extension of my own home. So on a personal level, it is very meaningful for me to come back here as library director. So truly, thank you for having me. It's, I'm very glad to be here. So enough mushy stuff. Let's get down to money. So we're asking for a salaries budget of just shy of $1.16 million, and an operating budget of just shy of $433,000, for a total of $1.59 million, which is 0.7% lower than our current budget for fiscal year '21. Our salaries reduction is due to vacancies and city ordinance requiring that we hire at step one of relevant grades. So this is not a reduction in staff hours or staff positions. We have been working hard to fill our vacancies, and we expect to be fully staffed by the end of this month, which is pretty exciting. It's been a few months. Looking at the library's operating budget, we have 27 operating line items. The present budget increases seven, decreases eight, and maintains the remaining 12 at their fiscal '21 levels. I like to break the 27 line items into three categories. The first is collections and services expenses. So think books and other direct patron service. This is our largest chunk of money with five lines. We're proposing increasing the sum of these lines from $227,000 to $228,100. So an $1,100 increase. For a budget of that size, it's a fairly flat increase. Second is building expenses. This is our middlest category. It has six lines. We propose increasing the sum of these lines from $154,500 to $162,000. That's $7,500. Obviously, that's more than the $1,100, but it's also a larger percentage. So I think that's something to keep in mind. Finally, equipment and supplies expenses. We have 16 lines that fall into this category, but it is our smallest budgeted category. We're proposing decreasing the sum of these lines from $48,875 to $42,325. So these three categories and the way they're moving right now gives a good sense of where the library is financially. We spend most of the money we have control over on collections and other direct services, and those costs are increasing but slowly. Our next largest amount of money is spent on our facilities, and that amount is increasing more rapidly. That's something that we should expect. Our building is in wonderful shape. It's a beautiful building. It's not that old, but it's old enough that some of our systems need repair and upgrade. So this is an anticipated increase in costs. The supplies expenses are decreasing, but only to a point as we work to maximize our efficient use of those resources. So that's really a quick overview of our budget. We had three goals in creating this budget. The first was to have the funding necessary to operate efficiently, to provide excellent resources and services. The second was to meet the requirements of the State Aid to Public Libraries Program. This program is similar to Chapter 70, Funding for Schools, and to the State Aid Program for Local Government. There are a few differences. Some are important, some aren't. The State Aid to Public Libraries Program is distributed twice annually rather than monthly. While it is largely based on population, it also takes into account library lending patterns a little bit. The most important differences are libraries have to qualify for the program in a few specific ways. One of those ways is by receiving a sufficient amount of funding from their municipality. That amount is equal to 102.5% of the average municipal funding they've received over the past three years. So the state wants to see a growth of about 2.5% every three years. The other important criterion is we have to spend a sufficient amount of our budget on materials, books and other circulating items. That's 13%. For us, that's just shy of $208,000. If the library doesn't qualify for this program, they don't get any of the money. If the library doesn't qualify for this program, they don't get any of the money, obviously, but they also don't get to apply for state grants, and residents of their community can't use other libraries. So you really want to make sure that we meet this criteria. Our third goal was to meet the first and second goals while keeping the budget as flat as possible. We were defining this as an increase of no more than 2.29%. That's the average increase in real spending over the past few years for the library. So we wanted to keep it as flat as possible, we're in an uncertain financial time. So the budget you have in front of you meets all three of these goals, and we feel pretty good about that. Looking ahead, to give a sneak preview of the next few years, I suppose, we do have an additional goal, and that is to increase our municipal support for our book budget. Doing so would directly improve our service to the public, obviously by providing more money to buy books, but it would also allow us to redirect some of the state aid funding we currently spend on books to more strategically advantageous projects, translation services, direct outreach into the community, and other similar projects. We also think it's, it's just a good financial move. Books are one of our core services, we'd like them to be funded by our core budget. Our municipal budget is more stable than the state aid to public libraries program, certainly more reliable than grants and donations. So we think, long term, that's probably a good way to go. So the present budget doesn't meet that goal. If you have extra money lying around that you need help with, we can certainly help you with that, but this is really just to give you a sense of where we think we're heading financially. That's all I've got. At this point, we'd be happy to take any questions about the budget, or about the library, or really about anything. Librarians love questions, so I'm happy to be here.
Thank you very, very much. Great presentation, by the way, very, very good. It almost sounds like you've been here for 30 years, quite frankly. You know, I understand the whole bit about the salaries and wages, to me, that's pretty self-explanatory. The one thing I, you know, like to talk about is keeping up with our infrastructure. You know, I know that maybe some of our buildings, maybe the police station, you know, we tend to kind of let go a little bit, you know, and to the point of no return. And, you know, the one good thing about the library is it's very, being very nicely kept up. And, you know, as you know, we had an appropriation on our agenda this past Monday night, for example, for our new key card system and other, other new equipment that you needed. So usually, you know, those types of things, if you don't see them reflected in a budget, you know, don't panic, because usually the mayor, the way he likes to operate, is, you know, he sends that down as a one-time appropriation, if it's a one-time type of purchase, and it's not a continuing thing. So are there other things on your radar that, you know, with the building itself, that you're going to be looking, you know, maybe we can be expecting some future appropriations? What else is on your mind after being there for a few months that you think you want to kind of delve into and keep up with?
Well, I definitely want to start by pointing out, the building is not far gone. We're, we're in really good shape, we have a really great team working on it.
And we want to keep it that way.
Yeah, absolutely. The city clearly cares a lot about this building, so we feel good about it. Just based on the age of the building, we have to think about carpets and upgrading lighting and sort of basic systems, you know, anything you would think about in your own home, we're, we're kind of facing the same system here. I don't know, do you have anything to add there? I am blissfully separated from the building sometimes.
During COVID, it came to light that a couple of our systems, especially like the boiler and the heating system, are aging, and parts are starting to fail. For the most part, we've been able to get repair kits, and the maintenance man and I are going through and doing an exhaustive overview of what is in the system, what is involved, and mapping out what parts we can reasonably expect and when, to have a better idea of a schedule to be able to anticipate any expenses that are coming. I'm also working with our head of adult services in HIQ, who's the city's technology department, to do the same thing for our computers, switches, and firewalls, which have been upgraded, UPSs, and anything in that system. So within the next fiscal year cycle, we should have an exact knowledge of what is in the building, what needs repair, and when.
Okay, good, good. No, you sound like you've got it pretty well under control, and you know what, you know what, what to be looking for, you know, which will save us money too in the long run, if we are proactive, you know, versus reactive, so, good. I think that's it for my questions. I'll ask members of my finance committee, Councilor Pauline Cormier, do you have any questions?
Well done, both of you, very well done.
Thank you.
I just have a, throw a softball for you here. Where are we with COVID, we up in running hours? Where do we stand?
We are, yeah. I like to be able to give a short answer to that. We're, the Board of Trustees met on Monday and approved a plan that brings us back to our full summer hours, right on schedule at the beginning of July. All our services are up and running again. We plan to go back to our full school year hours in time for school. So we're in a very good place. I should say that I just started in January, so I can't take any credit for the library's work during most of the pandemic, but I do want to say that they've done an incredible job. The library building has been open in a significant way for a long time, more so every day, but we're feeling really good about where we are. It's nice to see patrons in the building, all over the place, which is, it's really, you know, librarians have a stereotype of really loving books, and it's true, I mean, we're all, we're all guilty of that, but you don't become a librarian unless you really love working with people. So it's been something we've really missed over the past 15 months, and so having people back in the building, being able to meet face to face, recommending books in person, little things like that, is really meaningful to us, so we're, good things are coming.
Great, thank you.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Councilor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's evident that your energy and your enthusiasm is contagious, and as you're, I'm sure you're aware, two of my colleagues on the council are library trustees.
Yes.
And so, and we're very proud of the job you do over there, and the asset that the library is to the community.
Thank you very much.
And historical collection, and, you know, your stewardship of that is obviously very important to the community's history and cultural future. So as we tell everybody, we wish you we had endless funding for you, but...
We wish that too, yes.
But we do the best we can, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Any other member of the city council have any questions? Councilor Badanta?
I just want to say thank you, as Councilor Angelini alluded to, myself and Councilor Schalfo-Zephyr are members of the Board of Trustees. Nicole specifically, thank you for leading us through a very difficult part of the pandemic as our acting director. You did a great job, we spent a lot of time talking to each other during that period, and I found you incredibly responsive, and I'm very proud of the way the library fared through the pandemic. Alex, like you said, you've only been here since January, but I think I speak for the board when I say we're all favorably impressed with what you've brought to the job.
Thank you.
And we're very happy to have you, and very impressed with what the library's doing, and we're glad that we're getting back to normal, and I look forward to working with you in the future.
Thank you very much.
Any other members, Councilor Frida?
Just a point to your comment about extra money lying around. I know you're new here, that's one floor up.
Okay.
We may want to check here.
Thank you.
All set? Anybody else?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anybody else have any questions before we wrap it up? Seeing none, thank you guys very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the hard work, and hopefully, the next fiscal year will be a lot easier than the last.
It's looking like it.
And a lot more normal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're doing pretty good for time. We're just about four minutes late for the 6:30 PM for the school department. I will invite in the superintendent, Paula Deacon, and anybody else who she would like to bring in with her? I don't have enough. Thank you very much. It's just this, the book dated May 26, 2021, submitted by the school department.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much.
All set?
Yes, if you'd like to introduce everybody.
Sure.
That's here, and I'll let you have the floor, and you can start to explain your budget, you're welcome.
Thank you, and I just want to put in a caveat, if there is extra money, I'll hook up with the library as well, so, thank you.
And you know where the floor is.
I know. So to my right is school committee chairperson, Eileen Griffin. To my far left is the finance chair from school committee, Michael Stasten, and to my left is Sean McGoldrick from CLA Consulting Firm. He is here representing Melanie Michaels, our interim business manager. So this is a great team that we've worked with, and I'm sure they will be able to answer any and all of your questions. Not only tonight being a good night, tonight's a great night, it's the last day of school. Yes, so 6,000 students, almost 1,000 employees, and multiple, multiple parents get the opportunity to relax. We made it. So it is, it's a great night for all of us. So being here and culminating, you know, our petition for a budget feels really good. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize Gail Feckley. I have, I had a nice relationship with Gail, and she would reach out to me around educational, whether it was articles or suggestions, and we would just talk about schooling and pedagogy all the time, and I, she will be missed, and I think it is very honorable the way that you have remembered her, and I just wanted to say thank you for doing that. I also wanted to acknowledge the work that John Richards has done for the school department for multiple, multiple years. His presence was very much missed during this process, and so I do want to thank him for his years of service. So thank you for allowing me that time. But this evening, I really want to thank my teams that surround the students of Lemonster. Some are present here this evening, my cabinet, my building administrators, building staff, and school committee members. And I also want to mention, if you haven't heard about, our extraordinary food service team that have been serving students breakfast and lunch seven days a week since March 13 of 2020, and will continue to do so. A special thank you to all of our unions. This year has been one that has forced us to rewrite public education several times, and impacted every contract we ever had. Unions either met with us weekly and or spoke with us daily. The changing, the changes in learning platforms and guidance moved so often that flexibility needed to be in the foreground. Many staff are working in their secondary licenses to help fill gaps and address academic needs, and they found success. COVID will forever leave a mark on the world. Our school department was forced to make a decision with little to no guidance or knowledge of what was to come. I knew we were in trouble when the commissioner shortened the school year from 180 to 170 days. We can barely get through our curricula in 180. We were told we had 10 days to train our staff on safety and virtual platforms, but our staff, they sucked it up, and they did it, and we're talking all of our staff. They took on the challenge, and they succeeded brilliantly. As we changed our platform, remote, hybrid, hybrid, remote, in-person, remote, hybrid, we did it all. We always had students in mind, we moved forward and made sure that they were our priority, and now we're looking ahead to a really bright future, and the Lemonster Public Schools are all in. Details are provided within your binder, but should you need further discussion or questions, the team here, it will be available to answer any and all of those. So I would like to now present Sean McGoldrick.
Good evening all, and thank you very much Superintendent Deacon for allowing me to present tonight. The budget before you represents the unanimously approved budget by the school committee in May. Chapter 70 Formula Foundation, Chapter 70 is the state aid distributed to schools throughout Massachusetts. Most of us know the foundation budget portion, and that's driven by student enrollment. The other part of Chapter 70 Formula Foundation, which you may not be as familiar with, is the local contribution. This portion is the amount each district has the ability to pay towards Chapter 70 aid, and is driven by the city's property values and residential income. I know this slide's a little tough to see up here, but bear with us. As I mentioned in the last slide, Chapter 70 has impacted heavily on student enrollment. A dip in enrollment from one year to the next can have a significant impact. The formula is based on the school district enrollment on October 1 of the prior year. In October 2020, due to the pandemic, Massachusetts Public Schools lost 37,000 students. For Lemonster Public Schools, enrollment was down 187 students. Based on the combination of those students, that equates to a $1.2 million loss of Chapter 70 revenue. You'll notice on this slide that Chapter 78 from fiscal year '21 to '22 increased by only 374 grand, less than 1%, while the city's required contribution went up approximately 1.1 million, or 1.88%. This is not the final budget number. The House and Senate release and debate their own versions of the budget before negotiating a single version that with any luck will be signed into the state law by fiscal year '22, start of school. To make life hopefully easier on everyone, this presentation's going to be broken down into pieces of pie, two dozen love pie. There are five pieces of pie that we'll all review separately, and we have color coded them to make it easier to follow. Each year, we begin the budget process by determining the school's fixed costs. These are the expenses that must be paid. For fiscal year '22, Lemonster Public Schools budgeted, budget has 92% dedicated to fixed costs. So let's start with the biggest piece of that pie, which is salaries and wages. For fiscal year '22, salaries and wages make up 62% of the school's budget. From year to year, the budget for salaries increases by contractual increases, such as cost of living, step increases, and lane changes. In fiscal year '21, you can see that we requested 840 full-time equivalencies, employees, or FTEs for short. Currently, we have 760 FTEs, not the 840 as originally planned going into fiscal year '21. For fiscal year '22, the district is requesting 46 positions to bring the total FTE count to 806, still short of what we requested in fiscal year '21. The 806 FTEs includes all current positions, currently posted positions, and positions that need to be filled in fiscal year '22. The district is already seeing the return of many of the 187 students that were not counted as part of the 10-120 counting. This request is based on a full-in model, projected enrollment, and class sizes. Benefits and fixed charges, these make up 18% of the budget. The numbers you see here include benefits such as health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance for active and retired employees, and including their beneficiaries. You can see historically that we have a 9% to 10% increase annually, and as we all know, fiscal year '21 was not a normal year. We have a projected savings of 3.4% currently in fiscal year '21, based on the first three quarters we received. In order to project fiscal year '22 more accurately, we used our current enrollment for benefits and estimated an additional amount for the 46 positions we are looking to hire. That was mentioned on the previous slide. The total projected increase would equate to 12.3% when compared to fiscal year '21. So taken into consideration that savings, it's really a 9% historical growth. The next piece of the pie admittedly is probably the toughest to project, and there's numerous reasons for that, and we're talking about special education tuitions. The costs can fluctuate greatly from year to year, depending upon the individual student's service needs. Each student is different, and each require a certain amount of help, if you will. From year to year, it's challenging to project how many students may need to be sent out of the district, or how many may move into district. of the district, or how many may move into district. Fiscal year '22, we are projecting special education tuitions will be 7% of our budget, or our pie. As you can see historically, there is no trend in the increase or decrease of tuitions like you saw for benefits. In the past, we relied on the funds we've received from Circuit Breaker to help offset these tuition expenses. For fiscal year '21, we were able to absorb all the tuition costs in the general fund. As per Mass. General Law 603 under School Finance, we were allowed to carry $2.1 million of Circuit Breaker funds into the fiscal year '22. You will see that's why we only asked for the net, which is the 6.1 million from our requested budget versus the 8.1 expected need. The next piece has to do with indirect charges. Indirect charges are the expenses that are incurred by the city for the benefit of the schools. This includes costs such as administrative, retirement expenses, DPW services, school resource officers, state assessments for school choice sending tuitions, and charter schools. Historically, as you can see, these figures have been around 6.2 million. I believe the largest cause of this change is due to the fully funding of long-term pension costs. What does that leave us? What's left as part of our pie, which is 8%? 8% that equates to approximately 6.4 million. This last piece of pie represents all other expenses that are not necessarily fixed, but still need to be paid. We can segregate these as intangible expenses and not use directly into the classroom, things such as repair maintenance for the 11 buildings and equipment, heating and utilities for all 11 buildings, custodial supplies, leasing of equipment such as copiers, school security, legal services, so on and so forth. The intangible expenses have historically cost between 3.9 million and 4.3 million dollars. That's 67% or 2/3 of our 8% pie, who doesn't love math? The last third of the 8% piece of the pie are tangible expenses. Those are the costs directly impacting students, students in the classroom, things as textbooks, curriculum, instructional services, hardware and software, as well as psychological services, medical and therapeutic services, and general classroom supplies. These expenses have historically been between 1.5 million and 2 million. This slide shows the comparison between our original budget request in fiscal year '21 versus our budget request now for fiscal year '22, not including indirect charges. This represents an increase of approximately 1.3 million, or 5% for expenses. Overall, the fiscal year '22 budget request is 2.4% more than the budget request for fiscal year '21, which equates to $1.86 million. So, again, to recap, Lemonster Public Schools is requesting a little over $52 million for salaries and wages, about 27 and 1/2 million for expenses, a $4.1 million indirect cost estimate, which equates to an $84 million budget for the school. This fiscal year '22 budget will be supplemented by other resources that are available to us. We have one-time federal funding provided to the school district that will be available for the next three years, and that's to address pandemic-caused issues, let's say. We have also have our revolving funds to support specific programs and services, and of course, our grants. I just want to say thank you for supporting the students of Lemonster, thank you for your time tonight, and I will now turn it over to Michael Stassen, the school committee, school finance chair, for some remarks. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to add a few clarifying things. Chapter 70 formulas we've seen is ridiculously complicated and difficult to parse through, and I think some of that's the result of attempting to solve some problems, and I think some of that is on purpose, just to make it difficult for us to figure out what's happening from the state. There are also some issues that complicate just the numbers in front of you from the city, because there are two different ways to count things. So, you may have noticed in the cover letter to the budget that on page 2, there's an education spending number, and then on page 6, there's a different one, and the reason for that is that there are two different ways to count. In terms of your direct appropriations, there is the direct appropriation to the school department general fund, and there's also the appropriation for transportation, which goes in your education bucket. For the purpose of net school spending, the transportation appropriation does not count towards net school spending, however, the indirect charges do. So, when we do the net school spending calculation further on, I think that's page 6, we take out the transportation, but we put in the budgeted, expected, and direct charges. So, that's the reason for the discrepancy there. The four pages I handed you as we were walking up here are attempts to clarify some of the things from the cover letter. On page 2 in the original cover letter, you have a list of additional funding sources for the school department. I thought they were confusing because they mixed general fund money with one-time money, money we received this fiscal year with money we're receiving in the future. So, on the first page I handed you, I've just broken them out by what they are. The 1.8 million on there was the chapter 70 funding increase in FY '21. Then we have grants that we received this year for COVID relief that we've spent on COVID relief. We also were able to spend some of that on deferred maintenance, which saved the city some capital requests. And the last two, which are the biggest ones, are money we can apply for to get for the next two to three years. Page 4 of the cover sheet listed the current budget and prior years by functional area. And I, just for your benefit, I showed the increase by area and the percent increase by area for reference. Also, because we and the school department are more focused on net school spending, for the education line, I did the net school spending appropriation, so I left out transportation there, that's why that line is different. On page 6, there were two things that were given to you. One was the state support. There was a line for chapter 70, there's also a line for charter school reimbursement. I think it's important for everyone to understand that there's, we get a charter school tuition assessment each year, and then we get a much smaller number, which is money back from the state or reimbursement. So, ultimately, what matters to us is the net, the assessment minus the reimbursement, and that is one of the things that counts in our indirect charges. So, for FY, for the current fiscal year, the net was 916,134. For FY '22, we currently have three competing numbers, the numbers from the governor's budget, the numbers from the House budget, and the numbers from what Senate Ways and Means has passed, which are my next three columns. You can see, however, that the net is pretty close for all three of those. The increase over the current year is between 103 and 120,000, so we'll be somewhere in that range, all right? But again, this, this is, this factors into our indirect charges, this is part of the 4.1 million that we factored, we projected for indirect charges. Lastly, is the comparison of net school spending, the direct appropriation to the school department for fiscal '21 versus fiscal '22, that's on page 6 of the cover letter. I'm sure it was an oversight, but the fiscal year '21 number that was used on page 6 in the cover letter does not include the increase in chapter 70 we got this year. As you'll recall, last year when we were having this meeting, the state was nowhere close to deciding what the chapter 70 number was, and due to fears of the pandemic and possible recession, the mayor chose to assume in our budget that chapter 70 would not go up. It did actually go up 1.8 million, and that was appropriated to the school department as it should have been. So, the actual FY '21 budget number is what I've given you here, 75,539,670 is what was actually appropriated to the school department general fund for FY '21. So, the number that's been presented to you in your budget for FY '22 of 77,604,286 represents an increase of 2,64,616 over the current year, which is 2.7%. Out of that 2 million is made up of the increase in chapter 70 of 373,982 that Sean mentioned a moment ago, and so that represents an increase in your local contribution of 1,690,634. That's all I had, so, thank you.
Okay. Are you all set with your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you all very much, appreciate it, and it certainly has generated a few questions from me, and then I have a few that the mayor touched upon last night that I want to ask you about, and then we'll move right along. So, if I was listening correctly, we are 806 positions, and you wanted 840, is that correct?
840 last year.
840 last year is where you were. We're going to have 806 this year.
Correct.
So, that's, if my math is correct, 34 positions. Can you describe what those are currently?
Sure. In your booklet, we broke them down by unit A, tutor, professional, paraprofessionals, secretaries, parent liaisons, and where that they would be placed. The classroom positions are teachers to help with class size, with a projection of bringing back our 187 students, along with our specialist. Remember, in COVID, we weren't allowed to sing, we weren't allowed to have gym, and we need all those positions back. So, we're out reinventing that with intervention people as well. Our paraprofessionals usually are attached to our sub-separate programs and have a specialized need, and our secretaries at this point, we know it's been very difficult having one in the building, we're used to having two, so we are asking to bring back our secretaries along with parent liaisons, to have translators in every single building to communicate with our buildings. We have Spanish and Portuguese, but we don't have them everywhere. At this time, they have been, the ones that we do have have been on a .5 schedule, and that's not really feasible for families. They would like to have someone there the school day in order to check in and check out, so those are essential to make sure that our communication is strong.
Okay. All right. I want to touch upon these 187 students. Obviously, you know, when you do the math, you're talking about $6,417 a student is, so for everyone that comes back, that's how much we keep adding. What is your expectation? What do you think is realistic in terms of the return of those?
So, currently, once we went to a full reopen, we had about 45 students come in immediately out of that 187. Parents felt if they could get any in-person experience, that's where they would start. 100 of those students were kindergarten, they were our real little guys. We have surveys out with our parents. When we came back in full person, 30% of our students stayed in remote as of today. We have surveyed about, we've received surveys from 1,000 currently, and around 95% of those are coming back. They want to be in person. We're hearing from homeschool doubled this year. We are hearing from those families saying, "We're ready to come back." Right now, we are applying for a waiver through the state. We have some medically fragile students that without a vaccine, it is not in their best interest to be in person, so it's quite a lengthy process that we just started trying to protect them, but hold them within our district. I would say our enrollment will go up beyond what we typically have. We've been holding our enrollment steady for the last few years, and we still have school choice lists as well, where you have a waiting list. So, I feel that we will fill all of our seats and beyond, but we would really like to have that waiver go through for those students that can't be there initially. The hope is, once there is an elementary vaccine, that they will come back, and that's what families are telling us.
Okay, good, so that, so that sounds like good news.
It's great news.
It's great news.
It's good and bad. It's mostly good, because we would like to have those students, but of course, the state funding is based on last October.
Right.
So, those students that come back, we will absolutely do everything we can to educate them, but the state won't automatically give us additional money until next year.
Right, right, and that's what's going to be tough. Okay. All right. If you can just touch upon, since it was presented last night by the mayor, the Student Opportunity Act, kind of get into what that is. He gave an explanation that it was passed in 2019, and Lemonster was slated to receive 7 million over seven years, and instead, we've received $70,000. Can you explain that?
It's a mess.
So, the Student Opportunity Act was a reform to the foundation budget formula, and it attempted to address, I mean, if you've seen the formula, they, it's not, they don't just plug the enrollment number in and get a total, right? It depends on whether the students are kindergarten, or elementary, or middle school, or high school, it depends on whether they're English language learners or low income, so they have this whole breakdown. And then, there are amounts that are calculated for each kind of student for each functional role, administrative, teachers, and so on. All that gets put together to come up with the total number. The foundation formula was falling really short on the cost of health insurance for employees, it was falling really short on support for low-income students, and it was falling short on support for special education students. So, the Student Opportunity Act was supposed to address those three shortfalls by changing the formula to give extra funding in those three categories. And they set a target, and set seven years to make that target, so they should have made a one-seventh step each year. Last year, they did the health insurance part and the special education part, and really didn't do the low-income part. Also, because they want, people want credit for this, rather than simply calculating the new number and saying, "That's now your new foundation," they calculate your foundation budget the old way and the new way, and tell you the difference is your Student Opportunity Act money. That's the 70,000 we got last year. And the reason it was so small is because we are not properly counting low-income students, so our count is dramatically lower than it should be, and secondly, because they didn't properly fund the per-student rate for low income. The legislature is working to address that going forward. So, we're due all that money. If they get their act together, we'll get it eventually.
Yeah. Okay. One other question that I had. The mayor made some suggestions, I think Superintendent Deacon, you were here last night, for direct appropriations to the schools. He's suggesting no new administrative positions, add staff to special needs programs, positions for life sciences, and add curriculum, added positions in various areas of CTEI. Can you explain that as he presented it, and where you stand on that?
So, many of those suggestions are in line where we are. Special education, we just had our audit, and we came back clean for the first time ever. Long time. We were able to add programming, we are no longer on any special education waivers, we have adequate staff. Once again, it's a very fluid position. So, when a student joins us, we have to address the needs as they are in front of us, and we always do. We're very, we're very strong advocates for special education, and we do a wonderful job making sure those students have their needs. We're currently looking at two programs for CTEI right now, working with Mr. Bayshon and his team to put those in place, so all of his recommendations are right in align with ours. The one piece I wish he would have spoken to was about the translators in our building, and bringing in more bilingual staff.
Okay. All right. I have one more question, and then I'm gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to the members of my committee and the city council for now. I'm going to ask you to be a teacher for a minute and do some grading. What kind of a grade would you give this budget that you have to work with currently? An A+, anywhere from an A+ to an F? What kind of a grade would you give it?
The one we presented?
Yes.
I would definitely give this an A+.
Okay.
Want to know why?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, good. Because as teachers, we always give a narrative behind everything we assign. This process started, I want to say, day one of this school year, knowing what we were dealing with, and we had to destruct an entire school system. If you could name the protocol, we had to destruct it, from lunch lines, teachers, class sites, protocols, learning platforms, how to grade. We're now putting it back together, and how to grade. We're now putting it back together, and all of those considerations were taken into this budget. We stopped and we talked with our principals, with our cabinet, with anyone who would listen to us and say, "Listen, we're not going back to the was." We learned so much. I feel that I'm a dinosaur after 34 years. I'm really proud of myself, what I did with technology this year. You get these young teachers, they just can whip it out, right? But I think that this is probably the best work because we were forced to look at every position, who was teaching what. We maneuvered people. Quite a few staff went into their secondary license that they had never used before. Little to no complaining, the union, we worked with them. We had working team of teachers on every level. So this budget is not a surprise to anyone, and knowing that we do have federal funds, knowing that our circuit breaker, we didn't even touch this year. We didn't touch our school choice. It is so leveled. We're in such a great place for Lemonster. It's a celebration. I've been giddy all day. I actually couldn't wait to get here. This is a celebration. So whatever happens here, we know everyone in this room that we can take care of any and all children in this city. And so I say, "Bring them in, bring them on. We want more and more and more."
Okay, very good. Well, I just want to say, congratulations. You should be proud of yourself.
Thank you.
It's been a very, very tough year.
Tough's a good word.
And to hear that we have an A-plus budget from the superintendent in front of us is very comforting. It's very, very comforting. And I mean, I'm sure I could, I know I could ask a lot more questions. I am sitting amongst a lot of very seasoned veterans, and I'm sure that some of the questions that I would ask would be some of the same questions that they will. So at this point, I'm going to let them ask some of the questions. I'll check with members of my committee first, and then we'll go to other members of the city council. Councilor Pauline Cormier, do you have any questions for the superintendent?
Superintendent Deacon, you brought up the technology. What's our status? Chromebooks, every student, every, can you give us an update on that?
Yes. So when this happened, as quickly as it did, we were not prepared to just disperse students. They had not been trained. But we took everything out of every single building and then some. The city did appropriate a nice balance for us. We also went out over 1,000, Steve, that we had to get so that students had them. The problem was, there was a supply problem. But our families in Lemonster, those who had Chromebooks already, it's a pretty typical piece of equipment for families. They chose to use their own system, and we built the platform on that until we could get our own. Currently, we just ordered 1,400 more because there is an end of life to many of these. Students are turning them in right now. Some are damaged. Some of them have peanut butter and jelly in the keys. So the tech team's going to be very busy this summer. We're going to clean them up and redisperse for next year, and I don't have any concerns about children using this device moving forward at all. Once again, a lot of times, they teach us. So we're in great shape.
So then my question becomes, since the kids, and we all did, in my own profession, we were all thrown into this and learn the technology and figure it out. What do you have in place to maintain that? Obviously, the kids are coming back into the schools, so then they're not going to be using the technology quite so much as they're forced to do, you know, the entire school day now.
Right.
So what are we doing? What do we have planned to continue to enforce that? We don't want them to take a step back in what they know.
Correct. So there is a time and place for everything, and so that's what we're working with staff in training. Having students in person, we don't want them sitting on devices looking at screens again. But many of them, many of the staff have figured out how to incorporate because it is, it's a tool that students enjoy and they engage in for writing. They can share a document, all of them, and contribute. They can get into breakout sessions very quickly. They can meet with a child in another classroom without ever having movement and worrying about discipline. Steve Mamonie has a replacement plan. We have a PD plan. So skills keep increasing, and I don't know if you noticed, but we use Google Meet for most of our meetings, and every time we had a meeting, "There's an update, there's an update." It's getting pretty fancy. So the curricula that we had to buy this year, the state mandated that it was an approved curricula moving forward, all have components as well. It's all online. We don't have to print worksheets anymore. It's all on there. So it depends on how we want to use it. With our younger children, there are still skills, physical skills, that we need to develop. So there's a time and place for everything, but we are planning that through the tech department.
Okay. Finally, and I know this isn't a whole lot about the budget, but it's questions I've had. And you also mentioned earlier that the lunches, the programs, and phenomenal job
Phenomenal.
by everyone. Is, did I, it's my understanding that that's going to continue?
For another full year.
Okay.
And we're also going to do it throughout the summer again.
Excellent. Excellent. I know there's other council that have a whole lot of questions for you, but thank you and thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, and the third member, Councilor Angelini.
Mr. Chairman, I don't want to ruin an A-plus budget with a question that, so I'm going to pass it this time.
Sure.
Thank you. I'm delighted to hear that.
Thank you.
And I'll go to the members of the city council. I'll begin with Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. We'll go right around the room.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was very, very helpful and for the additional explanation. It was clarifying. So I just, I want to make sure that I understand which budget is the A-plus budget, because I think that's very important. So in the most recent version of numbers that we received tonight, and I'm only talking expenses and salaries, I'm leaving out transportation, school guards, all that other stuff. So for the department request, for salaries and expenses, salaries, I guess, are $52,240,754.
Correct.
Correct. Expenses, $27,672,43.
Correct.
So that's the unanimously approved school committee voted on budget submitted by the school department.
Correct.
Okay, good. Then in the mayor's budget for FY '22, what he's proposing, the school salaries line is $53,688. No, excuse me, $53,688,340. And school expense line is $23,915,946. So when I add these up, the total of salaries and expenses, and again, this is the school department submitted budget, is $79,912,797. When you add up the mayor's proposed budget, it is $77,604,286.
Yes.
Okay. So the difference, it's funny because in the salary line, the mayor increased the budget by 1.4 million. And in the expense line, decreased it by 3.8 million, 3.7, $3,756,000, basically. So the difference, so, you know, the salary line went up, the expense line went down, but the net decrease overall from the school department budget to the mayor's submitted budget is 2.3 million.
Correct.
That's the difference in, okay. So which of these, I assumed, when you were talking and giving the A-plus rating, I assumed that that was the school department
That is.
proposed budget, okay.
It is.
Not what is in the mayor's proposed budget that's in the budget that we're, okay, good. I want to clarify that because that's really important. 2.3 million difference is huge. You know, almost 3.7, over 3.7 million dollars in expenses. And so my question to you, team, is what would that mean to, you know, the positions that you carefully, you know, have obviously, you know, thoughtfully laid out here that the department needs, and then also for, you know, programs and other kinds of things? That 2.3 million dollar net decrease, what would that mean to the department? How would you handle it?
So I can tell you that this is the year that we cannot, we truly cannot make cuts. We have an expectation over the next three years to address all what some call learning loss. We have an accelerated learning plan that the state has put in place. So this would have to take careful consideration of reworking resources, revenue sources, ideas. 2.3 million, where we're already down 1.2, knowing that those students are coming back, would be quite a hit to the school department.
I mean, it would be impossible to even speculate about that. I mean, because it's, you know, I don't understand why there's an increase in the salary line and it is substantial, 3.756 million dollar decrease in expenses. I don't know where that comes from, but anyways. Okay, but that's what I want to clarify. There's a big difference between these two numbers and these two budgets, and the A-plus budget, for anybody who wants to be really clear about it, is the one that the school committee voted on eight to zero, unanimously approved and submitted to the mayor.
Correct.
Thank you. I'm good for now.
Sure. Anybody else have any questions for the superintendent? Councilor Dabrowski?
I had a question for Mike. I was just asking.
Yes, that's fine.
When you were talking about the Student Opportunity Act.
Yes.
Oh, my, it's not on, I'm sorry. You indicated that one of the problems with us receiving less money was not properly counting the low-income students.
Yes.
Could you elaborate a little on that?
Sure. So the Chapter 70 funding formula includes an extra increment for low-income students who are defined as students living in households up to 180% of the federal poverty level. This is exactly equivalent to students who qualify for either free or reduced lunch. Because of the community eligibility program, where more and more districts, more and more schools are qualifying to feed everyone for free under the USDA grant rather than paying individually, students are not filling out those forms for free and reduced lunch anymore. The state felt that this was a problem. We can't accurately count because we're not doing those forms. So the state decided that the thing to do was stop trying to count all the way up to 180% of poverty like they're supposed to, and simply count students based on what they call "direct certification." So any student whose family has signed up for a state low-income program counts. But those programs all go up to 130, 135, 130% of the poverty level. They're equivalent to free lunch. So the way the state is now counting the students is equivalent to counting the free lunch students and not counting the reduced lunch students. The Student Opportunity Act requires DESI to figure out a way to count all of the students. The legislators said this is not okay, not counting some students. The state was given until this last October to come up with a plan for counting, but then with the pandemic, they were given an extension till this year in October. Their plan to count is due at the end of October after we've done our enrollment. So at this point, the state is still using the direct certification number, which is to say the count of students who are in state aid programs, which means they're undercounting. Secondly, of course, the second problem is, as I said, for the first year of this, it's one thing to pass the reform to the formula, it's another thing to fund it. They passed the Student Opportunity Act to reform the formula, but last year, they didn't fund, fully fund what that would require of them. So they both undercounted the low-income students and also didn't properly fund the increase in rate per student. This year, they're looking at fixing the rate, I believe, but they're still not counting properly. The key point here is that we locally have no control over the count. The state is doing the counting. The only thing we can do is if we can identify students who we think qualify for state programs but haven't applied to them, we can encourage and help them to do so. And I believe the PIC Center has done a lot of that. So two years ago, I think we really put a focus on this. And so we improved, a couple of years ago, we improved our low-income count because we got more of our students below 130% of poverty to get into state programs they qualified for. But there's not a lot else we can do about that till the state starts properly counting those students.
So the problem is really, is really with the formula, with the legislature, not with, you know, the local level. Could you just, could you just touch on the school choice numbers, or are we still too early, really, to know that?
No, they're coming in, Jane. So we're starting to accept students at different levels. We do end up having wait lists based on class size. Until we have answers about our Lemonster students and where they will, whether they're going to be sitting in our seats or not, we're slowing down on accepting students coming from outside districts. Right now, we're in a very diagnostic place. We've had our students for a quarter in person in front of us. We're working with families, calling, contacting. Until we have all the groundwork done, we're on hold. But we still have people that would love to get into this school district.
How about the students that are opting out? How are those numbers looking?
At this time, it's, that's very low. If they're opting out, it's usually for, if you're a younger student, it's a daycare issue, or mom or dad work, it's that type of deal. It's been very quiet around that perception right now. I think it will start to speed up once everybody's home and has some downtime to think about those things. So we keep a very close eye on that.
I'll just add, from the finance perspective, when a student takes advantage of school choice to go to a different district, less than half of the foundation money goes with them. The home district keeps more than half of it. So financially, if we convinced all of our students to school choice somewhere else, we would be sitting on a big pot of money with no one to spend it on. Obviously, we wouldn't do that. But so when we accept school choice students, we, of course, fully educate them, but the school choice money we get for them is 5,500 per student.
But it's only a one year. It's only a one year. Because once they're our students, then they become, they come into our account.
So the school committee is authorized, we don't authorize just accepting everybody who applies for school choice. We've authorized accepting school choice students where classes have room to add students without having to hire, create additional classrooms and hire additional teachers, because it's not cost-effective to create extra classes for outside students. Because we pay the full cost but get not the full support.
And we don't want anybody leaving.
And we don't want anybody leaving. We like keeping our students.
And then if we could just touch upon the special education kids, the kids with an IEP. I think, just practically speaking, with COVID, I mean, there was a clear hit. You know, and I think probably some setbacks in getting them back to speed. What's the, what's the plan? And is the potential 2.3 million shortfall, is that going to have any impact on that?
So special education was one of the subgroups that was identified as high-needs right off the bat. We put them in buildings day one. And at first, it was two days. We recognized that that wasn't enough time. We went right to four days. So there was a lot of specialized instruction that was still happening. And for students that couldn't come in, we did have resources and remote resources to help students. And we have been assessing them all along. Our ABA, our autism program grew so fast that we, this year, in COVID, we had to bring on three additional classrooms, three teachers that, something you didn't bargain for, but when it happens, it happens. And so as soon as students could go five days a week, that was a priority. You're coming in, you're coming in. Summer school has been planned. It's extended for students. We're doing compensatory services, all of that. The meetings have been going very well. It's remarkable how the families have worked with us and supported us overall. They've understood, and, you know, there have been some classes taught in driveways, some OT classes done at the park. We've got, we became very creative this year. So all of that's being addressed. All meetings are up to date and current with parents, and we're moving forward. And so whatever students need, we're providing. The 2.3, we're hoping it won't touch our programming. We were allowed to save our circuit breaker this year. We did not touch that 2.1 million. So I will never think about taking services away for any child.
And that's, that was my last question. Is the circuit, I'd never heard that term before, which I probably should have, but what exactly is that?
It comes in annually, and it's a percentage that we get for special education services, teachers, all of that. And at the end of the year, it helps, it helps us pay. pay for the large costs, as you saw. It's at least 7% of our budget every year, out-of-district placements, all of that. This year, with the help of much of the CARES money that we had, we were able to pay some of those out-of-district tuitions through that. You are allowed to hold one year of circuit breaker and roll it to the next year, but it must be used by next year. So, we have to use that. It is, it's preferable. It's the first time we've ever been able to do it. We usually wipe it out completely. I think the last couple of years, we've ended up with $5,000 or $10,000 left in our circuit breaker. So, to have, sitting there right now, last year, and the coming year, we know that those services will not fail for our children.
Circuit breaker, there's, it's a complicated formula, again. It's based on how much the cost of out-of-district placements exceed normal cost. And the state is supposed to reimburse us, I think, 74, 76% of that, although each year, they tend to do a smaller percent than what they're supposed to. In leaner years, they'll budget us 68% instead of 76%. And then sometimes, at the end of the year, give us some of the extra. But the way the formula works, it's a small fraction of the total cost for the out-of-district placements. The sort of silver lining of the way things went this year is we were able to avoid spending this year's circuit breaker. So, the plan going, going forward is each year, we will spend the prior year's circuit breaker and roll the current year's circuit breaker over. That's especially important, because any one of these out-of-district placements can be very expensive and can happen at any time. There are some that are $200,000 a year, when, you know, that's the kind of expense, when it occurs mid-year, you didn't, that's a very hard thing for your budget, when all of a sudden, you can't say no. It's a required thing, right? Student needs that, so you have to do it. But now, you've got to figure out a way to pay for it. So, going forward, we'll have a little cushion for surprises, because we'll be doing, we'll always be planning to only spend the prior year's circuit breaker and roll the next year over.
And then, again, just one other question came to mind. Yesterday, the, the mayor was talking about the, the Chapter 70 monies, and I actually think I asked him. But essentially, we're using COVID school year numbers for our formula this year, coming out of COVID, which obviously is insane.
Right.
Is there, he talked, he touched on it generally last night, but is there any relief in sight for that, or any avenues for relief that?
Potentially.
Potentially out there?
The bills in the legislature, they have, there was a push to try to hold districts harmless on enrollment and use the prior year's number, but that didn't get anywhere. That didn't get traction. Instead, they've created a $40 million pool, so that districts whose enrollments rebound can apply to get some portion of that $40 million to make up the cost difference of students who've returned who weren't in your enrollment. Now, if you remember, Sean said 37,000, over 37,000 students disappeared this year. So, if they all come back, that's $108 per kid is in this $40 million pool.
And transportation.
Also, that pool is not just for students who return. It's also potentially can be used for regional transportation. So, at some point, assuming this is what, I mean, they haven't passed it yet, but if they pass it and it's $40 million, at some point, they will say what the process is to apply for it, and what the criteria are that make you eligible for it. And certainly, if we are eligible for it, we will apply for it. But it's, I mean, it just seems to me, the math makes it unlikely that it will, it has any hope of actually covering the full difference, because they haven't set us up, set enough aside for that.
Right.
Though I suppose if they're overwhelmed by applications, maybe they can increase the amount, if there's enough places calling for it.
$40 million for the state.
Right. It's, it's an unknown at this point. But there's, there's potentially some money, but there'll be a lot of people competing for a small pot.
All right. Well, it was a very nice and very thorough presentation, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilor Frida, I'm sure you have some questions.
Superintendent, the, most of the Chromebooks, that was all bought with CARES money?
It's, it's been a combination. CARES money, local money.
Remote learning grant.
Yeah, we put in for a grant last year. You told me to file for every grant out there, and we have. So, we were awarded, awarded quite a large grant that helped us out as well. So, it's come from several pots of money. We're constantly trying to piece things together, but it was a great effort, and we got the job done.
The remote learning technology grant mentioned on page two of the cover letter of $349,075, that went to Chromebooks and Hot Spots.
Yes.
Now, the yes or money goes directly to you?
Yes.
So, it bypasses the city, it goes right into your?
Yes.
Right into your, your funding?
Yes.
Whoever put this formula together, the Chapter 70 formula?
Mm-hmm.
That was an excellent idea. People don't understand how money is distributed to the school system.
Yeah.
People don't understand that, when you look like, look at it, equalized property value, what is it? You know, nobody understands it. It's the value of your whole city. And you base it, and then you, then you take the other with the local income. You put those two together, and it comes out with a, with a formula that usually doesn't work.
Right.
Right.
And it's quite a burden on the city, if you look at the two numbers, what the state contribution is, and then what the city has to do.
I sat on the Foundation Budget Review Commission in 2000.
Yep.
First time we were really, that took to 2015 to really get to a point, you know, where everybody knew something had to be done. But the, the concept was always a good one. It just didn't work. I mean, if you, if you take our community that works hard doing the sidewalks, doing the downtown, maintaining, you know, streets that, that are well-kept and no trash, and, and you bring people in from other communities, now your property values go up, your EQVs go down, and that's how it's supposed to work. But you're supposed to be putting your local money in there to make the difference, because the state says you, you have that money to do.
Yep.
So, I mean, the concept is right.
Mm-hmm.
But if you don't follow the concept, it doesn't work.
Right.
So, I mean, this is just an excellent way, I mean, to, to explain to people how Chapter 70 gets to where it is. And that's where, that is the foundation. Everything else comes after that.
Melanie Michaels really thought it was important. She did a series, she did four series on the funding of the school department for the public. Just trying to, it's very, very difficult municipal finance. There's so many different pockets. So, she explained each piece of that puzzle.
So, this will be on your website?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that should be.
So, if anybody has questions.
That should be known, because it is, it is kind of an important tool.
Yes.
I mean, people need to understand, you know, it is 60% of the budget, and everybody has a different point of view.
Mm-hmm.
But it's, it's really important to be funding it.
Yeah, it's very complicated.
You know? And I think people need to see that and hear it.
Thank you.
So, and just another note, I know you left, but the principal was, Dr. Duzinski was, I think he left. I just wanted to comment on the news last night, was reenacting a graduation for a girl who missed it because of COVID. That was a great thing to do.
That's, that's the work that's been done all year long. We made sure that students really didn't lose anything, the talent. There were theater productions online. There, we've had sports, we had art clubs. There was a cooking club. I'm not a great cook, but I'm not sure how you cook online. Students really didn't miss out. They used their technology appropriately. To watch what the arts department did virtually was incredible. Music happened, music lessons. They could do it through the computer. The band got together out in the parking lot. It was just nonstop. And I have to say, with the return of students, they were great. They went right back to being children, you know, even down to the behaviors, right? They're kids. And we had no problem with masking with them. They just went right back into, we're, we're excellent with routines and rituals in school. And that's what they needed, and that's where they fell and had the most success. So, we were very excited to have all students back. And we were one of the first to get our high school in. We did it before the state gave permission to bring them in. We finally said, let's go and let's do this. So, I am proud that we survived.
All set? Okay. Councilor Badanza?
I just have some observations. First observation is I have to turn on my mic. This is my eighth budget season here as a city councilor. And I have the opportunity, of course, the school department budget obviously is a huge part of every year's budget. And over the years, when there has been difficulties, certainly, there was a lot of examination, a lot of hand wringing, a lot of hard work as well. But I just want to say that the budget material that we were given this year is just excellent.
Thank you.
It is clearly the most thorough explanation of your budget that I've ever seen. And as a city council, I just want to say, I truly appreciate that. It's made the job of evaluating things a lot easier. As Mr. Stassen said, school finance, or municipal finance, and school finance in particular, are about as clear as mud. And I, I, it bothers me a lot that the taxpayer, the people that are footing the bill, don't really understand it, nor should they. It would take a course for them to figure this out. I'm still learning eight years later, and I've spent a lot of time on it. To me, a system like that is just wrong, that this, there should be some way, and this is my editorial, of making this system a lot simpler, so we can all understand it. And the other thing is, is I'll observe, and I've observed this not just here in Massachusetts, but in other states, that somehow, the wealthier communities end up with the better end of the deal with these formulas and these foundation budgets and all this hocus pocus that they play down in Boston. Somehow, the wealthy communities do better than us.
Yes.
And that's, that's a shame, too. So, it's never easy. You've made it easier this year, and that's really much, very much appreciated. I know that there's a delta between the school committee voted budget request and what the mayor's budget is, some $2.3 million. I like to think that the cash flow problem that we've had in prior years, though, isn't as bad.
Correct.
In the sense that you have the $2.1 million worth of circuit breaker money that's available to help bridge that gap. We all know that this is a moving target. We don't know what the final Chapter 70 money's going to be. We don't know what, you know, some of these, the Student Opportunity Act is going to actually net, what might happen with these student counts. You know, in years past, there's been one-time transfers. And we have all kinds of other programs that are in the mix, both on the city and school side, that hopefully won't put us in a position where we have a cash flow issue. Do you, would you agree with that generally, Superintendent?
Yes, I definitely agree with that.
Okay. Well, like, again, I just want to say thank you for all your hard work in keeping, more importantly, keeping these kids on task, keeping them, you know, educated. And, and we all look forward to a much brighter year this year, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All set?
All set.
Okay. Councilor Ardinger, I think you're the only one, if you have any comments or questions.
I guess being last has its advantages. I just want to echo Councilor Badanza's comments, because what, you know, I can't say I've read every page of this book, to be honest with you, but it was very, very thorough. And especially with a year that you have really no idea what the numbers are really going to be. You guys are still trying to figure that out. So is, so is the city. But one of the bright spots that I heard you comment about was the continued use of technology in the classrooms. That is a big plus, because I know I had a grandson in my house a couple of days a week, and just watching what they were doing with the computer, I said, this has got to be done in the classroom also. So, you're doing that. So, I commend you on that. And the other thing is, on the school choice program, people come to Lemmonster because you have a great school system. And that school choice has been increasing every year for the last, what, 10 years or so? So, that's a good sign, too. That means that you're running a good school system. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Councilor Shafle, you're welcome. Councilor Shafle Zephyr, if you have any final comments?
I just have, I have a final question, and I do want to talk about transportation, because, again, I think that that's another shortfall. In the school department, school committee-approved budget, there was 4.3 million allocated for transportation. And the mayor's proposed budget is 4 million. But isn't there, don't, isn't there a new contract with a new?
Yes.
And what's the, what's the cost? What's the actual cost of the contract?
So, we have two. We have for the special education and general education is 5.23.
In total?
In total. And then, we, we have estimated, we have students who, for special education services, out-of-district rides, ride, ride, DBus, individual transportation, for about $800,000 as well. So, our proposed budget is 6.1 for transportation.
So, that's your actual, I mean, that's, that's your cost?
That's what it'll actually cost.
So, there's another $2 million shortfall.
Right.
So, when we keep talking about, you know, the $2 million in circuit breaker money that can, you know, maybe cover the $2.3 million difference in the two budgets, there still is a transportation shortfall that, you know, the city, you know, funds in some fashion. But again, it's just another thing to keep in mind. It's another $2 million.
You're exactly right. We've done this, just so nobody's confused, this is standard for Lemmonster. I don't quite know why we do it this way, but we know, we, we know the real cost of transportation will be about 6.1 million in fiscal '22. And as you said, the appropriated number here is 4 million. The city has historically appropriated in the budget a number significantly less than what we've known would be the real cost. And the difference has been paid out of other sources. So, typically, I believe the last few years, that's been the Medicaid reimbursement plus free cash.
That's correct.
Correct.
Yeah, almost always.
Right. So...
If you could also maybe speak to, for the public, not knowing that it's not part of net school spending?
That's true. That's correct.
And really, who is responsible for the bill?
Right. So, it's kind of strange. If, for regional school districts, transportation is part of their net school spending, but we're not regional, even though we're as big as some of the regionals. So, transportation is not part of net school spending. And that's, that's a double-edged thing. It means that what we're spending doesn't count, but it also means they're not providing any support for it either. So, simply adding it to net school spending wouldn't help us unless they also came up with money to pay for what they added.
Right.
What, when we did the analysis a couple of years ago, we know that all but about a million of the 6.1 million is required. We have to bus the special ed students. We have to bus up to sixth grade. And because we pay per bus rather than per student, and the buses make multiple runs, the only students we don't have to transport are seventh grade through 12th grade. We think we have to for educational reasons. We'll have a lot of attendance issues of students not being able to get to school if we don't transport them. We aren't legally required to transport them. But all that does is save, save some runs. If you still need the bus for the other levels, you still have to pay for it. So, when we looked at this a couple of years ago, we were trying to save money on, on transportation. I estimated, as close as I could, that we, if we were to eliminate the seventh through 12th grade that we're not required to do, we could knock about a million dollars off the transportation. So, we wouldn't, even though that's half of our students, it doesn't cut the bill in half. It cuts it from 6.1 to 5.1. And when we brought this up last time, as I recall, everybody was in favor of busing all of our students, because we want to make sure they get there, and we want to make sure they get home. So, as long as we're all agreed, that's the priority. There's no point in even talking about not busing seventh through 12th grade.
And we don't have alternative, you know, like, public busing for, you know, getting students like Worcester or a bigger community. So, we really rely on those buses to get those students to school, and that's vitally important.
Yeah.
No, I agree. I remember those conversations, and I remember hearing from high school parents who were very concerned about getting their kids from North Lemmonster to Lemmonster High School, you know, in the morning, when they had to leave work, you know, much earlier than their student would have to, you know, go out the door. So, I remember those conversations and couldn't imagine that we would cut that.
So, just, just so long as everybody understands that it's not that we're overspending our appropriation on transportation, but that the way the city has chosen to pay for transportation is to appropriate in the budget roughly 2/3 of it and pay the rest from other sources, and the expense is known. And as long, you know, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure I would choose to do it that way, but I'm not gonna, the bill gets paid, so I have no reason to object.
Are you all set, Councilor Shafle Zephyr? Okay. Mr. Councilor Badanza?
In the midst of all this, I think with everything going on this year, you've also, you also settled some contracts as well.
Yes, we have.
Which is another significant thing.
Significant.
Yeah. Do you want to talk about that, Superintendent, just briefly, or?
Just, just very briefly. With the cuts in the roof? With the cuts in the rifts that we had last year, it's been a difficult year. All of our unions worked very closely with us to stay on task, to stay with us. And we worked with our teachers' union. We had some dissension in, in their party. And we, it became important to invest in our teachers and our parents and our, our tutors. And so we have made, you know, we balanced things out this year. We invested in curriculum. We invested quite a bit in our buildings. Our buildings have never been so healthy and in a great place. But we also invested in keeping our staff for longevity reasons. So we have settled all of our contracts at this point.
That's great.
So we are moving forward into FY '22 clean.
Excellent.
Good. All set? Okay. Is there anybody else that has any final comment or question?
Mr. Chairman, just a note. When I was coming in, and I think Counselor from Ward Five as well has a constituent here who asked if she could speak. I said it's generally up to the chair, so I'm just letting you know she mentioned it.
Sure. We are going to have a, a public hearing on June 28th. But I know that, I think it was last year, we let, you know, we, it does, there's nothing, even though it's not on the agenda, it doesn't prevent me from allowing the public to speak. So sure, if there's somebody that wants to speak, I don't, I don't have any issues, you know, hearing from the public. And maybe we can resolve a thing or two, any questions they might have, you know, before the 28th. That might be helpful to us. Otherwise, if they speak on the 28th, which they are encouraged to do and will be able to do, it gives us very little time to react if there's something we want to check into. So sure, if we, if the city council is all done with questions, then I'll invite the public. Would anybody from the public like to speak? If they would, you can step to the microphone.
Do you mind if we dismiss ourselves? Or do you want us to?
Or do you want to stay?
Or do you want us to answer the questions?
You can stay. You can step up to the podium there. There's a microphone. It should be, it should be on. It should be on unless it got unplugged over the last 15 months. I don't know. You'll be the first person to use it since March of 2020. And you can state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Amy Minor. I am the mother of three LPS students, with the youngest being 10 and my most medically fragile. I come to you tonight to ensure that while budgets are being discussed, that there is funding for a remote option in case that, in the case that it will be needed and to ask for your full support in the efforts the superintendent is making with DUCY to allow for this. As of right now, the state has decided that remote option is not available for grades K through five. These are the only ages in which parents do not have, even have an option to choose whether or not they want to vaccinate. Schools are scheduled to reopen in September with all regs lifted and without the opportunity of protection. This should be unacceptable for our community. Nothing has changed for that age group. So they are re-entering the very same environment they were moved from. My 10-year-old has respiratory issues. They are not so severe that he is hospital-bound, but severe enough that his system will not handle this virus, the same as a typically healthy child might. I cannot morally send him back, knowing nothing has changed. I can homeschool or enroll him in an out-of-district online academy. But at this point, it isn't developmentally appropriate to ask this age group to transition more than necessary. Another need for this to be considered is what will happen to the children who do come down COVID-positive and they are asked to quarantine. Will there be a remote platform for them to access? And if siblings are involved, this, this could have a compounding effect, not only for the children, but for their parents and their employment as well, in turning, in turn affecting our city's economy. Our city needs to be ready, even if the state isn't. There needs to be a safety plan, remote option in place for those who cannot return unvaccinated and in the event that there are positive cases. I am asking you to please stand behind our school district to help protect the youngest in the community that you all represent. We should not be forced to pull our children from our own school district for the time it takes for the state to make vaccines available. If the state can't provide a chance at vaccinations, then we must provide a safe and equitable learning environment until they can. Please execute your power to help rebuild what post-pandemic education means to Lemmonster and extend your support by signing the newest attempt at a waiver in the hope it will help sway the state and ensure that there will be funding to the next year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Would anybody else from the public like to speak this evening? If so, you can step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Peter Higginson, 333 Elm Street. I just wanted to clarify something that I don't know was picked up on. It sounded like from some of the comments that the circuit breaker is, might be believed that we still have the $2.1. We have already, the school committee reduced that already out of the budget. So what was requested already has that $2.1 in circuit breaker accounted for and reduced in our, in our request. So that's not extra money. It's already been applied.
That's important.
Okay. Sure. Good.
This is for the superintendent. The, the point that Ms. Minor just raised is that, do you have money in the budget for a remote option for students?
So this one isn't about money. This one is about approval. We, we want to have a remote option. We, we know that it is necessary. Ms. Minor is not the only parent who is asking. So Laurence Opole is filling out grants where, they, they make us jump through hoops for this. So there is a waiver process that we're involved in. There is also a possible special education form that we can help and work with families. So we're just trying to fine tune those, and we will be talking to families one-on-one. We believe it's necessary to have a remote option moving forward.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll go to the public. Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak regarding the school department's budget? Once again, would anybody else like to speak regarding the school department's budget? For the third and final time, would anybody else from the public like to speak regarding the school department's budget? Seeing none. If there's no other questions or Counselor Angelini?
Yes.
Ms. Minor, would, would it be helpful, the council, or the House, a resolution? What can we do to help that situation?
Are we there yet?
The school committee did it at their last.
We, yes, we passed a resolution ourselves as a school committee. And we would love to have the support of the city council as well. Ultimately, it's going to, you know, be up to the state. But I think it certainly would be a nice effort of solidarity and understanding that we have some very vulnerable students in our system whom we still need to educate appropriately so that they can be healthy and, and learn to the best of their abilities.
Mr. President, can we give that some consideration?
Sure. We, we certainly can entertain a resolution to do that.
There will be a quick turnaround once we get this waiver placed in. We should know by mid-July whether it has been accepted or not.
Okay. All right. Counselor Shafle Zephyr?
Thank you. And is that with the Department of Ed, with DUCY?
Yes, it is.
They're the holdup. They, they need to approve us doing that.
Are they approving other communities? I mean, do you know, I would imagine other communities are doing the same thing, applying?
Yes. There's all sorts of deadlines and, yes. So we're, it, it's all deadline. If you weren't in on that specific deadline, the communication with DUCY has not been great this year. So deadlines have been missed, and there has been little to no flexibility around that. We just spoke with them today. We threw ourselves down on the sword and said, whatever it takes, we need to have this done. So we have another option, and that's the waiver that we're working on right now.
Okay. Thank you.
I think, you know, just to sort of underscore what you said, we have not gotten consistent or timely directives from DUCY in many areas this year, which has really left the school department scrambling. And, you know, as the chair of the school committee, I really need to commend not only the superintendent and her cabinet, but all of the staff, teachers, support staff, custodians, whatever. Everybody has really pulled together to make the best of a very difficult situation. And I believe we've done it, you know, better than most communities. And particularly given our size and the complexity of our students' needs, we have really worked very hard. And again, just this budget process, just to give kudos to, our finance subcommittee has worked very diligently and very hard with many, many tireless hours with our business department, our superintendent, the cabinet. It's really been a team effort under some adverse, you know, conditions. And I think we really have put forth probably one of the best budgets I've seen. And we have the best, I think, accountability of our money. And I've been on the community, the committee for a very long time. And this is probably our best product ever. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work. If there's no other questions, I think this portion of the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
Okay, everybody, class is dismissed.
Okay. Just give a, a minute for everybody to clear out that wants to clear out. And then we have a seven o'clock portion of the meeting. It's a finance subcommittee meeting. Sure, go for it. I suppose. Sure? Yeah, it's time-sensitive, right? It, it is. Yeah, it is health. It is health. Yeah. Peace, health, and safety. Okay. We have a finance subcommittee meeting, which was scheduled for seven o'clock. I am going to once again read the Committee of the Whole notice. This notice of a city council committee of the whole meeting is posted in the event that a quorum of city councils is present at the standing committee meeting. If less than a quorum of city council is present, no committee of the whole meeting shall take place. If a quorum is present, any such meeting shall be restricted to the standing committee agenda items listed above. First on our agenda is C-92, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requesting an appropriation of $80,000 be made to the Recreation Department expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Recreation Department salary and wages account. This is regarding ongoing skate park project that will carry over into fiscal year 2022. I did have a conversation with Judy Sumner regarding this. And it's important to note where the money is coming from. It's coming from the salary and wages account. So obviously, they had savings within their budget this past fiscal year for obvious reasons, because of COVID. And they weren't accomplishing everything they needed to, so they didn't have all the staff that they had planned for. And what is happening is this money is going to go toward the state, the skate park. And they just want this encumbered. It's going to get carried over into fiscal year 2022. So they're asking that those salary and wage savings will get encumbered and is going to go toward the skate park project. And I know that I am very much in favor of it. So it is going to be my recommendation to grant C-92. And I don't know if any members of my committee have any questions or comments. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
My only comment is I want them to finish up the final, the final design and get it moving along. So I am in support of this as well.
Okay. Counselor Angelini? Twelve? Okay. All right. So that'll be a unanimous recommendation on the finance committee that on June 28th, we will grant C-92. Okay. Moving on to C-93, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requesting an appropriation of $1,016,208.38 be made to the Sewer Department capital outlay expense account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency fund. So basically, I got a little bit of an explanation here. What we are doing is we are obviously moving money back into this fund, the free cash from fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20. I do have a breakdown of the sewer. The total free cash from fiscal year 19 was $790,847.7. The total from fiscal year 20 was $725,368.31, which equals $1,516,208.38. And the reason why we are only putting in $1,016,208.38 is because, if you remember, on our September, I believe it was September 14th of 2020, that agenda, yes, that's correct. September 14th of 2020, they bought a piece of equipment in which we moved money to the capital account. So they bought a vehicle for $500,000. And we were told that once free cash was certified and we knew what the water and sewer was going to be returned, we, once we knew that amount, John Richard said that this would be deducted from that amount. So that is why, so that's what we're doing right now. We're deducting that from this amount. And the amount left over for the two fiscal years that needs to get paid back is $1,016,208.38. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-93. Counselor Cormier, I don't know if you have any comments or questions?
No, I agree.
You agree? Counselor Angelini?
Get unanimous, Mr. Chairman?
Okay. So the recommendation of finance will be to grant C-93 at the June 28th meeting. C-94, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requesting an appropriation of $803,889.09 be made to the Water Department capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Very similar communication. It's a combination of fiscal year 19 and fiscal year 20's free cash. Fiscal year 19's water was $662,956.82. Fiscal year 20's was $690,932.27, which equals $1,353,889.09. And the reason why we're only moving 803,889.09 is because at that September 14th meeting, we also had a communication on the agenda, which was C-16, in which we took out $550,000 for the Morse dam repair. And once again, John Richard said that once they had the totals of free cash and the calculations for water, that that amount would get deducted. And that is what we're doing here. So that leaves us with $803,889.09. And it would be my recommendation that we grant C-94. And once again, Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
After that detailed explanation, I am in agreement as well.
I spent a lot of time digging for information to be able to explain it in detail. I spoke to Jake, and he agrees with all the amounts as well. Thank you. So we will make a recommendation to grant C-94, June 28th. C-95, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requesting an appropriation of $1 million be made to the stabilization fund, the same amount to be transferred from the unfunded liability expense account. This is regarding the reimbursement of the FY 2020 paid in advance. Most people remember that there were a couple of appropriations that were made in 2020. And what we did is, we sort of, because we have the capital to do so, we have the extra money to do so, we, we played the market, if you will, with our fund. The market was low, and as they say, buy low, sell, sell high, buy low, correct? So that's what we did. And the market was very low. We didn't want to basically take any money out at that time. So we took money from other sources, and now we're paying it back. And we certainly played it very well. John Richard mentioned it probably could net us, I think he had given an estimate of a hundred and some odd, maybe 200,000. I, I don't, I don't know. I don't have that final number, obviously. Obviously, he's not with us anymore to ask, but it certainly was a savings to the city. And we're just simply paying that money back now that we can do it at a better rate. And it would be my, my recommendation to grant C-95. And I'll check with Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I'm in agreement as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So that's a unanimous recommendation, the grant C-95. C-96, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested an appropriation of $954,608 be made to the General Fund Capital Investment Program Fund, the same to be transferred from debt principal school account. This is regarding funding the school athletic complex for fiscal year 2021. So basically, if you look at what has been communicated to us, there is a schedule which shows the FY 20 right up through FY 2025, which is going to end up totaling $9,759,216, which I believe when we started talking about this project, I think we were talking about a half a million, if I'm not mistaken? Five million?
Two thousand.
Five million. Right, five million, not a half million, five million. And now we're up to nine million, almost, almost 10. So, you know, we can see what the cost, where the cost of everything is going. It would be my, it would be my guess that what's happening here is we're expecting, John Richard never really said how we're going to pay for this in the end. He was mentioning that we may end up using money from other sources. I don't know if one-time fund, one-time, one-time payment from some free cash or some other resources, or go out to, go out to bond. I'm guessing, considering how the expensive this keeps going up and up, and we're taking on debt with the police station and whatnot, it's possible that we're going to have to go out to some kind of bond. But it does appear that they're looking to buy some time so that other debt that the city has will mature and will roll that debt, this debt into that. And we'll be able to do this without raising taxes. And I'm sure that we'll get into this more once the new comptroller comes into place as well. And, you know, that will be the administration, something that she'll work with the administration on to see, you know, how we're going to fund this. But for now, we're putting this money aside so that we can move forward with the, with the complex. So it would be my recommendation that we grant C-96. And I'll check with Counselor Cormier.
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I will agree as well, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee will be to grant C-96.
Excuse me. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Before this comes up for vote, could we have the final design? I haven't seen a final design. I mean, Ward Four Counselor and myself went on a couple of different walking tours of the, this is the high school complex, right?
It is, yeah. One would wonder if the final design is complete even. I don't know that for a fact.
I don't either.
But we should find out.
Yeah. We should find out.
And I don't believe it's been out to bid yet.
Well, if we're going to appropriate nine million, nine million dollars or commit to that, it'd be nice to have the final plan.
Well, yeah, well, we, well, for a variety of reasons, we would benefit from that. So we could inquire. That would be helpful.
Absolutely. And, you know, I mean, I, I wish, I mean, I wish John Richard was sitting here. He could explain it like no other. But, I mean, I would have to think, I mean, this, this is not, you know, moving this money does not bind us to moving forward with the field. I mean, it just, it's putting funding in place incrementally so that we were preparing for it. But, I mean, in reality, I mean, I don't think we're committed, you know, so.
The city of.
If they don't have a final design, and, and we don't like the final design, somebody's got a problem with it or whatever, I mean, this is not going to be the end of the world, I would think.
Just taking, they're taking money that's embedded in the current tax rate for debt and putting it aside. I mean, John Richard's philosophy was always to, you know, either reduce the amount of the bond as much as possible or even pay it, pay for it in cash. So I think this is an extension of that philosophy.
Right. Oh, I get that. I don't have a problem with that. It's just that, as you know, I still get calls from the neighbors up there.
Oh, yeah. As soon as, as soon as there's a shovel out there, we're going to hear from them.
Well, if they, I mean, if they hear about this, I mean, they'll be wanting to know.
No, absolutely. I will ask, I certainly will ask about that. But I just, just for the public, you know, to know that, you know, this has been on the radar for a long time. We're just getting funding, you know, in place, and this is not like we're committing to whatever's out there and, you know, that's, that's it. It's going to be whatever it's going to be. There's still a lot of discussion to come about this. So, but I certainly will, will see if that exists. And if it does, we will all, everybody will have it.
For the record, the loan authorization was in 2017. Which accounts for the, you know, and we, I don't, I don't think we know what that price will be until obviously it's bid, but.
Right.
And even if there isn't a final plan, it would be really helpful to have an update on the project.
Right.
You know, has the engineer done any, you know, further drawings or, just, just to get an up-to-date assessment would be really helpful.
Totally.
Okay. All right. So I don't know if I checked with members of my, obviously. Okay. So we're going to agree to grant C-97 as well? That is unanimous?
No, that was C-96.
No, that was, no, that was C-90.
You're on C-97 right now.
Oh, okay, sorry. It's the same thing. Sorry. All right. Thought I did that one already, but, okay. C-97, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested an appropriation of $650,000 be made to the General Fund Capital Investment Program Fund, the same to be transferred from the unfunded liability expense account, this is regarding funding at the school athletic complex. This is the FY 2020 portion that they want to set aside in preparation for this project. Likewise, I would, it would be my opinion to grant C-97. Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I agree as well.
Okay. So we have a unanimous recommendation to grant C-97. C-98, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested an appropriation of $21,000 be made to the Cemetery expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care income account. This is regarding an overhead door replacement and mower. As everyone knows, this is coming out of my, my favorite account, as the mayor, as the mayor told me when I was discussing this with him the other night.
About equal with me on that for my stabilization.
Yeah. So I, but I do not have a problem personally with this spending. You know, it is for, it's not for salaries, it's for maintenance. Obviously, the, the overhead door for the garage at the cemetery is broken and does not function properly. The door needs replacement as repairs will no longer suffice. And the existing mower is an older machine being run every day to keep up with the maintenance on the 55-acre property. With more frequent mechanical issues and repairs needed, it's struggling to meet demands. A new machine is necessary to continue grounds maintenance. So obviously, this is standard, well, maybe not so standard, but certainly very understandable stuff that does break down. And it would be my recommendation that we grant C-98. Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I think both those items are vital, and I would be in agreement as well to grant.
Okay. So that unan, that recommendation will be unanimous on June 28th. C-99, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested an appropriation of $70,170.72 be made to the Cemetery Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Income Account. This is regarding W-1, which is $37,124.64, a part-time clerk, $17,461.08, and seasonal help, which equivocates to 1,039 hours for $15,585, equalling $70,170.72. I, I have an issue. I don't, I don't like salaries coming out of there. I, I believe that it's, those funds should be used for one-time purposes and not ongoing things like salaries, just like we do on many other accounts in the city. But that's my opinion. I'll check with Counselor Cormier.
My opinion would be to grant.
Okay. Counselor Angelini?
I would agree with the smart Cormier.
Okay. Perfect.
Which one is that?
So that, it's not unanimous. It's not unanimous, but the recommendation.
I don't share your philosophy. I figure the money's basically coming out of the same pocket.
Okay. The recommendation.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
The distinguished chairman of finance.
Distinguished, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to bring a little levity to this evening, that's all.
Yes. So it will be the, not the unanimous recommendation, but the recommendation of Finance to grant C-99. Moving on to C-100, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested the fiscal year 2022, which totals $137,076,287.10 to be adopted, the same amount to be raised by the fiscal year 2022 revenue. Obviously, I am, I am not ready to, I'm going to give this further time. We haven't heard from the public yet. We still have a public hearing on June 28th. So it would be my recommendation that we should give this further time.
Agreed.
Counselor Angelini?
I'll share that.
Okay. So further time. C-101, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested the fiscal year 2022 Water Department budget, which totals $6,748,994.08, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. Once again, we're going to have a hearing on June 28th, and it'd be my recommendation that we give this further time.
Agreed.
Okay. Counselor Angelini, further time. C-102, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested the fiscal year 22 sewer department budget, which totals $6,337,577.20, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E. Once again, we're having a public hearing on June 28th, and it'd be my recommendation that we give this further time.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Okay.
You're not really recommending further time. You're recommending pending the public hearing. Your recommendation is postpone pending the hearing.
Yeah, which is further time.
Well, a recommendation of further time would be a recommendation of further time on Monday, on the 28th, at a meeting.
Well, yeah, the next.
Semantics.
It's further time for now. For now.
It's a term of art, further time.
All right. C-103, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requested the appropriation of $11,486,758.53 be made to the Stabilization Fund, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency fund. So on July 27th, 2020, we finally had our free cash from fiscal year 19, which was If you do the math, that would mean that fiscal year 20's free cash is $4,086,594.53, which totals the $11,486,758.53. And I was told by the mayor that they were advised that they wanted those two amounts lumped together. And so the vote we took technically last July is that portion's going to be a ratification. I guess you could look at it. And I just want to be clear that, that $7,464 has actually already been added. It's just a ratification. The $4,086,594.53 is the new money going in. So we are not, we are not adding $11,486. We are adding a little over 4 million. I just want that to be clear. And it would be my recommendation that we grant C-103.
I agree.
Your brilliance is on display this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Perfect. So that is going to be granted. That will be the recommendation on June 28th. And I do believe that that is the end of our Finance items. And this meeting, if there's nothing else that anybody has.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. All those in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
How was that? Did I explain everything enough?
You did.
Good.
You were brilliant.
I thought it was sitting at an auction there.
at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.